All right, good evening. It's 7:00 PM, July 18th. I want to call our select board meeting to order and invite everyone in the room to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under our umbrella in difficult with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get into our scheduled agenda. 7 o'clock, we have a common victual license application for Brothers Sports Bar and Grill. Is there anyone in the room? Yeah, come on forward here if you don't mind, sir. And if you would do me a favor, I'm vetting your Kayla and Peter, but I want to make sure. So just give us your name and affiliation so our recording secretary can capture that information, okay?
Okay, all right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Peter Tsunakis.
Kayla O'Donnell.
Thank you both, okay. So you want to just explain, I know you're applying for a common victual license and the location is, what, 553 Main Street?
Correct.
So just give us a little detail about what you're trying to do.
So we're in the process of purchasing 553 Main Street, which is currently operating under the Skybox Restaurant and Bar. We're here tonight to acquire the common vic permit so we can get one step closer to finalizing that sale and also another step closer to actually allowing us access to get into the space and begin our reno project, which we plan to revive and transform the place.
Okay, so what do you think you're going to do with the building?
I don't know. So we currently are operating in Drake it Mass at Brothers Sports Bar and Grill. So we're looking to do kind of like the same thing, totally go in and freshen the place up. I mean, I can get into depth on, if you want, on construction stuff, but basically walls, floors, you know, new furniture, new equipment.
So right now, I think the Skybox is set up more as like a bar, like live entertainment, music. We're looking to do like a family-style restaurant, sports bar.
Okay, all right. So at some point, I assume you're going to pursue a liquor license?
We're on the agenda for August 8th.
You know more than I do, so that's good. Okay, all right, very good. And you have the other location, what'd you say, Drake it?
Correct, at 101 Broadway Road.
How long have you been in business there?
I opened that in 2006, and there's been constant, there's been a few renovations. The last major one was in 2019, which actually transformed us into more of a sit-down family restaurant that caters to both the bar crowd and the family, the family crowd.
Great.
And that's what we're looking to do here in Tewksbury.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Well, we hope you get off to a great start, so.
Thank you.
All right, do my colleagues have any questions for the applicant? Anybody, Ms. Wellman?
Thank you for coming before us.
Thank you very much.
You have a great reputation. I have many folks who reached out and said, oh, this is really exciting.
Thank you.
So that's wonderful. I'm looking at your floor plan, and it looks like you're removing the stage, and you mentioned that.
Correct.
So you will not have live music anymore? Is that?
So currently at the current location, we do live music, but it's like acoustic sets on like Fridays, 8 to 11.
Sure.
And it's just like one or two-piece band, nothing like more than that.
Plug and play, you know, regular 120 volt, nothing crazy with any amperage or stuff like that.
And then you have this kind of circular thing kind of in the middle of your arrangement in the front where you're adding seating and stuff. Can you tell me what that is?
Circular, is it? The circular, oh, it's just a circle booth.
It's a circle booth.
Yeah, just to kind of, yeah, change it up a little bit.
I'm like, what is that?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. I have no further questions.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have one question. So it's currently still open, right? As the Skybox?
Yes, it's currently operating still.
So when, I mean, if this is passed, when would you expect to start this construction? Is it scheduled for a certain time?
So everything right now is contingent on the liquor license transfer on the sale. So August, if everything goes well, August 8th here, then it goes to the state level, and we all know how the state operates. So I'm hoping it gets back in a timely fashion where we can begin, say, I'm hoping like mid-September for construction, and we have a three-month construction period. So possibly looking, if everything goes as planned, we're probably looking at like a November, December opening.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So Mr. Montori, just a procedural question. If we were to make this license effective immediately, it probably would supersede the existing one, right? So do we want to make this effective at some point in the future? As an existing?
I honestly don't know how to answer that one.
Yeah.
So his plan is, I know the current owner's plan is to stay operating until like that last finalized document comes through.
You can make it effective when the current owner turns his licensing.
Yeah, that's probably the best way to do it, right?
Mr. Chairman, they're going to be back for a liquor license at that time. That's the reason I was asking the question of whether the transfer is going to happen.
So we could, you could do it one of two ways. We could table it till that evening, or we could approve it as was just recommended upon the termination of the existing license, whatever the preference of the board is. Do you have a comment?
Did you say you needed it to get to the next step?
No, it was just a requirement, just a contingency in play, just to get to the liquor license, I think. I think we need to have the common vic permit, I think that, was that, I think with the town, or am I, I could have it backwards also, I'm not sure.
They're just getting all the licenses ready to go.
Yeah, I give you credit for getting ahead of it, but, all right. Whatever the board's preference is, but if we give the license effective now, we're basically taking the other one.
It's only the one for Skybox.
So we should be mindful of that, right?
Mr. Chairman, can you make it pending the closure of the sale or something like that?
Definitely do that.
Bring it into the select, the town manager's office with the sale or something like, does that make sense for you?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then you have that in place for your financing or whatever you need.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we approve the common victual license transfer from Skybox to Brothers Sports Bar and Grill effective the completion of the sale.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we, again, I'm going to do this a lot tonight for the benefit of our recording secretary. So the motion was offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well, so that'd be a unanimous vote. So you can coordinate that through the town manager's office, and I guess we'll see you in a few weeks, right?
Yes, we will.
So good luck, and we look forward to seeing you here in Tewksbury.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Have a good rest of your evening.
All right. All right, the next item on our agenda is an opportunity for any residents of Tewksbury to offer any general comments. I want to offer that opportunity to anyone in the audience. I don't see anybody rising, but I don't want to be jumping the gun, going once, twice. Okay, we're going to move on. So new business, we have special town meeting, we need to schedule dates. We all have a memorandum dated July 14 from the town manager recommending that the board call for a special town meeting to be held on Tuesday, October 2nd at 7:00 PM at Tewksbury Memorial High School. Any questions or concerns about that?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick thing, that should be Monday, not Tuesday.
Whoops, sorry, let's correct that. Okay, if there are no questions, can I ask for a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm with the manager through you that that does not conflict with Rashashana Nymcog.
I checked, and based on my research, it doesn't, but that was my research.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special town meeting date.
Second.
October 2nd.
All right, so we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. And then concurrent with that, we were asked to open the warrant for special town meeting starting tomorrow, Wednesday, July 19, 2023, and closing the warrant at 12:30 PM on Friday, August 18, 2023. Any questions or concerns about that? If not, can I ask for a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, the motion's offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote in the affirmative as well. Okay, next on the agenda, you have discussion of committee and board appointments, and each of you, or each of us, I should say, have a listing of the vacant terms that exist for various committees. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 committees listed with varied vacancies ranging from 1 to 6. The cultural council has 11 vacancies. So there are various applicants, you have material on each person that's applied. I believe these continue to be advertised, so if anyone paying attention to this meeting has interest in these committees, I'll read them in a moment. It's not too late to apply, and what I want to do is ask the members of the board to take these under advisement, do any homework that you want between now and our next meeting, and when we come back, we will take a vote to make appointments. If any of you feel that you want to do interviews, please reach out and let me know, and we'll schedule those between now and the next meeting in August.
Okay. Can I just make a quick comment to the town manager on this? Can we ask, office, there's a number of applicants that have applied for numerous positions. I'm just curious if they're actually, if they applied to be on, like, would they accept to be on two or three committees? Or were they just looking, they applied and hoping to get on one? So can we find out?
Find out.
Make some phone calls to see if they just want to be on one, or would they accept more than one?
Okay, any other questions on this action? All right, we're in pretty good shape on committees, but we'll work to round those out. All right, our next item is fire department detail assignment and the declaration of a special municipal employee. You have material in front of you from Michael Donovan, who is a firefighter EMT here in Tewksbury, in the Tewksbury Fire Department, and he is applying to be a traffic control guard through the Tewksbury Police Department. This disclosure is required, and the board needs to recognize that disclosure. Are there any questions about that? If not, let me just ask for a motion to accept the disclosure.
So moved.
Second.
All right, for the record, the motion was made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That would be a 5 to 0 vote. That brings us to the town managers' report. You have anything this evening, Mr. Montori?
No, the only thing I have is a town council invoice for June 16th through the 30th in the amount of $3,910, and I'd recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All right, so for the record, Ms. Wellman made the motion, Mr. Krappman seconded. All those in favor of approving the June 27, 23 invoice in the amount of $3,910, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative, making that 5 to 0. All right, Mr. Holland, we have some minutes to approve?
Yes, we do. We have the minutes for June 6th and for June 12th. Is there any questions?
Okay, make a motion to approve?
They can make a motion to approve June 6, 2023 meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 6, 2023, made by Mr. Holland, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will make that unanimous.
Now make a motion for the June 12, 2023 meeting minutes to be approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion offered to approve June 12, 2023 by Mr. Holland, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that would be unanimous. All right, that brings us to board reports. I think we're proceeding here through record time. Mr. Mackey, you have anything you want to offer tonight?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Krappman?
Yeah, we had the MBTA Advisory Board today, just talked about typical maintenance and issues they're having. Nothing really major to, you know, to update the board, just things that the MBTA is working on improvements. I have the LRTA board meeting tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Mr. Holland?
I have nothing.
No, Ms. Wellman?
Two quick things. The Nymcog met recently, we had our strategic planning meeting, recess, retreat, rather, on a Saturday, on a Saturday, on a Saturday, and I went, and it was great. We are also starting a strategic planning process, and we'll be reaching out to the boards, the chairs of all the boards in town and town staff, and working regionally to get feedback on what folks would like to see in the future of Nymcog. And my colleagues, I'm open to any of your feedback and happy to send you the same questions. And secondly, I just wanted to highlight that the public library is offering 30-minute one-on-one technology help sessions on Friday, July 21st, from 1:30 to 4:30. So that was something that was tough when our, when it went away for a lot of our seniors, and so it's back, it's awesome, I encourage people to go.
I could use some of that technology help myself.
There are days, with the coffee maker sometimes.
Indeed.
That's not one of the options. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I have nothing else that I want to put before the public tonight, so we'll move to our next agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. All right, we're going to move into the next item, which is why I think many of you in the room are here tonight, and that's related to the retail marijuana application process and the hearings that we commenced in mid-June. We continued all eight of them until this evening. So I want to just offer some comments to start. We'll talk a little bit about the process tonight. I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to offer any comments, and then we will proceed to address, assuming the board is prepared to move forward, we'll proceed to address each of the applications, and our intention will be to take them in the exact same order that they were presented to us, numbers 1 through 8. So first off, I think a number of the applicants are in the room, so I want to thank the applicants for participating in the process and for giving us the information that they did. After the in-person hearings that we held and discussions, we asked each of you for supplementary information, and we were pleased that you all were very prompt in getting that back to us by the deadlines. It was all very helpful. The compilation, I think, was about 180 pages of reading material, so you gave us some homework to do. But I want to thank each of you for your interest in Tewksbury and also for participating in the process. I can tell you that personally, I did not know much about retail marijuana, the industry or sales, before this process began. I've certainly learned a lot from each of you and your presentations, your written material, and in doing my own research along the way. So I guess I can say that I've learned a few things, and I have some information that I didn't have when this process started, and that's what life is about, is learning. When we started the process, all of us, including you folks here and the four of us at this table, we all knew and hopefully recognized that there were eight applicants, there actually were more, a few fell out of the process earlier, but there were eight people or applicants who came forward here, and we, as you know, can only give up to three licenses. So that's, you know, suggests that no matter what happens, five people go home unhappy. That's the way the process works, and you're all business people, so I assume you got into the game and understand the risks that are attendant with that, and that applies here because we had eight interested parties, we only have three licenses. It's reflective of what I believe is a competitive process, and I think that's a benefit to the town of Tewksbury. I can also say that I know that my colleagues and I each did our own research and came to our own conclusions based on what was provided by you, what the regulations dictate that we consider, and what we believe is right for our community. As for me personally, and I'm not speaking for the board, but for me personally, I learned that this is a highly competitive business, and there's a significant failure rate. So as such, I personally placed a lot of weight in my decision-making on prior experience, the capitalization, and the geography concerns that are attendant with each application. And I also found in the analysis that I did that I favored owners in my analysis that are also operators, as there's less operational and business risk, in my opinion, for the town. So that was something that weighed heavily in my personal consideration. Now, I realize there's room for different opinions, as much of our decision-making is subjective in life. I sincerely want to thank the many residents who took time to express their personal views through numerous, unique letters and emails. They were their own words. Please know that I considered those views in my evaluations, and whether my votes may be consistent with those views or different than those views expressed, nonetheless, they were each valued in my consideration. I also want to take a moment to thank those people who came in person to give us their opinions. That's an extra step, and I especially appreciated the feedback and input that those individuals provided to me and my colleagues. I also want to express some disappointment in a couple of instances of anonymous mailings attacking applications or proposed locations. For example, I got this in the mail the other day. While I'm not certain if these were generated from Tewksbury individuals or from others outside our community, I do know that those efforts did not represent the best that we can be. I'm disappointed in that. And finally, I want to take a minute to acknowledge receipt of about 100 emails over the last few days from two of the applicants. They were form letter, letters that we received between Friday afternoon and late today from two of those applicants. And what, while I would agree that any residence, resident has the absolute right to convey their thoughts to us in any way they wish, I want to underscore that, in my opinion, this board took great pains to make this decision or the decisions we're going to make tonight based on substantive, objective criteria. This in no way was a popularity contest, in my opinion, or a political campaign, as one request for an email suggested, and I don't believe this board will take its votes tonight in that manner. Rather, we're striving to do what each of us here thinks is right for the town of Tewksbury, and I hope that every interested party, whether you're a resident, or an applicant, or another interested business here in town, will try to keep that perspective in mind when evaluating the final outcome, whatever that might turn out to be. All right, so those are my comments. Let me just offer my colleagues an opportunity in a general context to offer any feedback that they wish to offer at this point in time. Anyone, Ms. Wellman?
Yep. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I concur with your comments, and I thank you for those. Today is a great day for Tewksbury. We have tremendous business opportunities before us. As a member of this board, we have the opportunity to weigh in from time to time on new business coming to this community, and I think that this is an exciting day for our community. I want to thank all of the applicants for their participation in the process, for your willingness to respond to our follow-up questions, various tours. I have been to most of the facilities that have partnerships with our applicants or are applicants, and it's been a very educational process. I've read every letter that we've received, I've listened to every individual who's come before the board in person, and I have appreciated the way that this process has been done here. I would like to echo Mr. Johnson's comments vis-à-vis anonymous letters, emails, interest in causing disruption at town meetings, and I really didn't appreciate some of the petitions being sent to my children. I have been in service to this community for 13 years, I know how to make decisions like this, I've made impactful decisions like this, as have every member of this board. We will make these decisions based on substance, as Mr. Johnson said, and I'm looking forward to it. For me, I agree with Mr. Johnson vis-à-vis the owner-operator model. All the other items I looked at, in addition to location, were financial resources. I have no desire to turn Tewksbury into the cannabis capital of Merrimack Valley vis-à-vis billboard advertisements. I have great interest in opportunities to gain market share, to maximize the revenue back to this community, and I am particularly interested in minimal impacts on residents. So those are some of the guiding principles that I have followed, and I have appreciated all the letters that we sent, that were sent to us where folks had their own metrics and areas of interest, so with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so, yes, I'd like to make a few comments myself. Much in the way I've reviewed many other applications, I know this is a cannabis, and it's the first time that we've heard something like this, but I've reviewed every application much in the same way that I've reviewed any kind of application that comes before our town. Look at traffic issues. The number one thing that I do when I review any development that comes to our town, first thing I ask myself is, does this make our community better? Is this help that area? Does it cause a problem in a certain neighborhood? Does it create issues that we may not have the answers to? And is there mitigation proposed to help with those, some of those things? That was a major determination on my selection of who I think would be great for this community, and like I said, and I looked at each, I called police chiefs, I reviewed each location, I called town managers, I did my research, unbelievable on this, trying to get what other towns, what the problems have been, what the positives have been. The great news was, mostly I've heard positive things from other communities, that there haven't been many other issues, so that eased my concern on some of the, you know, items that I thought would be an issue. But I know, I also know this town pretty well, so I, you know, I know what will cause traffic concerns and what won't. So, you know, I appreciate everybody coming forward to us, but I'm basing my vote on, you know, wherever I think is the best locations for our community.
I'm going to echo all my colleagues, and I want to thank you, all the applicants who are here, and I especially want to thank the planning board for doing their due diligence in a short amount of time. It's greatly appreciated. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for now.
All right, thanks, Mr. Holland, and thank you for that comment. Okay, so as I indicated, what we will do, we will take these up one at a time. Each one has a hearing that was continued to this evening. I'm going to ask my colleagues if all of their questions that they have had are now resolved, if they are prepared to move forward. If that is the case, I will ask for a motion to close the hearing. We'll move into a deliberation, and we will take any comments that individual board members want to offer about that one application. When we're satisfied that there's no further discussion, I will ask for a motion to approve the license or a motion to deny the license, and then each of those motions will require a second as motions will require a second, as is our custom. If it fails to secure a second, then the motion will fail. The intention of this board is to have a final disposition on each of the eight this evening, and so, an affirmative vote, which would be three votes in favor of the four people sitting here, would give one of the three licenses to that party. Any other outcome, no silence. The indication is that that is the form of a denial. So, it doesn't mean that you did not get the license and have another bite at the apple. Our intention is that after each one, you know that you either received the license or the license was formally denied. And I'll make a point of stating that again. But the intention of the board is to give you an answer and to have finality to that decision. So, let me ask my colleagues if they're all comfortable with that, as I explained it. Everybody is in agreement? Okay. So, let me turn to the first application, which was Sunday's, and that's located, or proposed to be located at 2504 Main Street. And let me ask if there's any questions or concerns around that that are unresolved. And if not, can I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right. For the record, Mr. Kratman offered the motion. Ms. Wellman seconded the motion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. I vote in the affirmative as well. All right, so that brings us to our deliberation phase. Do any of my colleagues have any comments that they want to offer about this particular application?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wellman.
Just as sort of a summation of the application, I thought it was a good location, deep in south Tewksbury. I didn't think it had significant traffic impacts, certainly compared to some of our other applications. I note that the spot is already owned, but it has not at all been maintained, not even mowed, and I think that that's a concern, and certainly a signal to possible neighborhoods. And it is close to some residential neighborhoods, which was a concern for me. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So, that would bring us to the point where I'll ask for any motions that my colleagues wish to offer. Okay, I'll remind my colleagues that you can make a motion to deny or a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to deny 2504 Main Street, the Sunday's application.
Second. Okay, so there's a motion made to deny the application by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm going to vote in the affirmative as well. So, that's a four-to-zero vote denying the application. Okay, let me go to the second one. That's Lazy River Products at 553 Main Street. Are there any questions or comments that my colleagues wish to raise on that one?
Could you want to close the hearing first?
Before I do, I just want to make sure that all the questions are resolved. Yeah. Everybody's good? Okay. So, now I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Wellman offers the motion. Mr. Holland seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So, the hearing is closed. Does anyone have any comments they wish to offer regarding our deliberation on this particular license application?
I make a motion to approve the application for Lazy River Products, 553 Main Street.
Second. Okay, so we have, in this instance, a motion to approve the license, and a second by Mr. Holland. First motion was made by Mr. Kratman. All right, and I'm going to apologize, because I should have said this in the beginning. I'm going to ask if Mr. Kratman will amend his motion, because we have some hanging chads, if you will, on the licenses. If we approve a license, we need to make sure that we have an acceptable, negotiated host-to-community agreement. We also need to make sure that, much like the liquor licenses, the policy of the town is that if there's a change in the company ownership, the license does not get transferred. It comes back to the town of Tewksbury. So, I want to make sure that we have that on the record. And third, Mr. Kratman, if you don't mind, is no change of location, right? Because we obviously spent a lot of time considering locations. So, those three conditions, and I apologize, I shouldn't have mentioned those earlier.
I did mention the location in the, when I made the motion to approve for 553, but I do, will, I'll change my motion to, with the agreement that we have, a signed agreement with the town, that you come to a condition with the town, that we sign an approved agreement with the town. The location remains the same, and there'll be no transfer of license to a new owner.
Okay. So, we'll include that in your motion to approve, and Ms. Wellman, just for, oh, Mr. Holland, rather, I apologize. You second that again? Okay. All right. So, we have a motion made and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And I'm voting in the affirmative on this one. So, that's three votes in favor. Ms. Wellman, no. Okay, that brings us to Full Harvest Moons, Inc. at 1 Main Street in Tewksbury. Are there any outstanding questions on that particular application? If not, can I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, so that's five to zero, excuse me, four to zero. Close the hearing. Are there any comments about this application?
I make a motion to deny the application from Full Harvest Moons, 1 Main Street, Tewksbury.
Second. Okay, motion to deny the application made by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, I'm going to vote with the majority on that one. So, that's three to one. Ms. Wellman, opposed. That brings us to the Stories Company at 2122 Main Street. Any questions outstanding on this particular item? Okay, if the board's satisfied, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Okay, the motion to close is offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, making that a four to nothing vote. Is there any further commentary or concern in the deliberation phase for this particular matter?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment. Yeah. I wanted to state that I was glad that the proposal removed the option for additional retail space, and I wanted to also that I don't think this is a great location based on the congested bottleneck for traffic in this particular location. I did want to say that they had a great response to the supplemental questions.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay, are there any motions that my colleagues wish to offer?
I'll make a motion to deny the application for the Stories Company, LLC, 2122 Main Street.
Second.
Okay, a motion to deny by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm voting in the affirmative. That's a four-to-zero vote to deny the application. Next one is Community Care Collective, 1693 Shawshin Street. Are there any outstanding items my colleagues have concern about? If not, I would ask that someone offer a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That's a four-to-zero vote to close the public hearing. We're now in our deliberative phase. Does anyone have any comments they wish to offer about this particular application?
I'll make a motion to deny the application for Community Care Collective, 1693 Shawshin Street.
Second.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Kratman to deny the application, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor of that action, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to vote in the affirmative as well. That's four to zero. Next application is Pure Tewksbury Doing Business as Smith Cannabis, located at 1695 Shawshin Street. Are there any outstanding questions by my colleagues on that matter? If not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That's four to zero to close the hearing. Is there any commentary that board members wish to offer on this particular application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Wellman.
I make a motion to approve the location.
Okay, so the motion is made to approve the loca, and let me just, for clarity's sake, ask, are you making those same contingencies?
The same stipulations, yes.
Okay, thank you. Approve the application. That was offered by Ms. Wellman. Did I hear you second on this?
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman.
We did, we have the address along with that, right?
1695. Thank you, sir. That's, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That's four to zero to approve that license. That brings us to Bella Luna, LLC, located at 890 East Street. Are there any further comments or questions around that? If not, can I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I vote in the affirmative. I think I heard four votes. That's unanimous. We're now in our deliberation stage. Is there any commentary on this particular matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny the application for Bella Luna, LLC, 890 East Street.
Second. Okay, we have a motion offered by Mr. Kratman to deny the license, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Chair votes in the affirmative. That's three in favor of denying, one opposed. That brings us to Cabineer, LLC. Location is 2186 to 2196 Main Street. Are there any further questions or comments on this particular item? If not, can I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That's four to nothing. We're now in our deliberation phase. I want to give the opportunity for anyone to offer comments. Okay, if not, I'll ask for any motions.
Chairman, I make a motion to deny the application.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Kratman. All those in favor of denying the application, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And I will vote with the first votes. Three opposed are denying, one in favor. Total of four. Okay, so we have distributed, by my count, one approved license to Lazy River, subject to the conditions that were stated. A second license to Pure Tewksbury, with the same contingencies as were stated, and all other licenses were denied at this time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We don't have any other business tonight, so let me ask if there's a motion to adjourn our meeting. Our next board meeting is scheduled for August 8, 2023.
So moved.
Second. A motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now adjourned. Have a good evening.